Everyone now down brought in that they fired our police chief. And they fired him without cause. I called and talked to David Tyson today and confirmed that he in fact did fire Gar Nielsen without cause. As everyone knows, unless you've been on Mars, we don't have a police chief except for rural partners. And we're here to answer questions if we can. We're here to hear your comments if we can. I would like to bring Gar Nielsen back, but quite frankly, if I was Gar, I wouldn't come back to this town under these circumstances. How they fired Gar was just shameful. And the reason why I put this meeting together is, I'm ashamed of Eureka. For the first time, since I've lived here for 10 years, I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed of the way they treated him. I'm ashamed that our city had anything to do with this. And I think it's time that the city heard our voice. Now, if you live up in Lombard Hills, you may not need police presence up there. I'm glad for you, I'm happy for you. But I live on C Street, folks, and I need police protection. And before Gar, we got a lot of people working to fill out, we never saw a police officer, they never showed up. And as a result, we lived in Beirut, it could be a big comparison. Now, we have police patrol. Zander, Nan, and I, we patrol Jefferson School that night. There's not one night that we walked by that school that there isn't police presence there. That just didn't happen five years ago, or at all. We couldn't even get the police to show up in our neighborhood half the time. And that's all changed. And he was technically fired for no cause, and then was because of nymphomaniacal differences. Well, this management style differences, we need a lot more differences in this city. And it's time... Now, lies speaks, I don't think we're gonna get Gar back, and I don't blame him. You know, I would've taken a really quick flight out of town, and I wouldn't slow down until I saw the "city" sign in my rearview mirror. But after what they helped David Tyson treat him, and what they put him through, we probably will never see him again. And that's a sad day for all of us in Eureka. I don't know how we're gonna fix this, but I think we have to start by eliminating the process. I don't know how David Tyson had so much power. I think it was all the little looks and cravings, and over the years. But it took one man, one man, not these voices here, one man to go over there and fire our police chief. Now, I can see if he had done something that was scandalous, or he had done anything that had hurt our city, but he has done nothing but dedicate himself to fixing the problems that he was asked to fix. Please, don't anybody forget, he was asked to come in here and fix a problem. We were living in a city where it was like a shootout at O.K. Corral. And it was an embarrassment to us. Well, nothing was as embarrassing as the way they terminated him. And not one single solitary person in this room, or this city, got a voice about whether we should keep him or get rid of him. And there is something wrong with that system. Everyone... I truly believe that in front of every government building, there should be the phrase, "Absolute power corrupts absolutely." And that is what has happened here. There is no reason whatsoever that we were given, that was on the front page of the newspaper or the back page of the newspaper, why that man should be guarded. And I for one am not going back to the dark ages. I will not do it, and I don't think anybody here in this room wants that to happen. We are starting to clean up our city. And our city is never gonna prosper until we clean up the crime and the mess that has been allowed to just percolate in this city for years. And that's what was happening. We had families moving in, you know, children moving in, something that you didn't see on the west side unless they didn't have a choice but to live there. We have people wanting to live there now. Do you think that's going to stay there that way? It's not gonna stay, and we go back to the same way we're doing things. So that's why we're here. We are here that we must have a voice, we must stand up, and we do not stand up to what's happening to the city, we have nobody to blame on ourselves. And are we gonna hide in our homes like we used to? I have floodlights, you ought to see my alleyway, it can compete with the strip in Las Vegas. I mean, I'm serious, it's so does everybody else. We have a burglar alarm, we have, you know, we have locks and everything else just to keep us safe. I don't even wanna go into the crap that I had to pick up in these alleyways in front of my house every single solitary day. That just doesn't happen anymore. And it's simply because of the police presence. We actually have police refuse to come into our neighborhood before Gar. And the dispatch lines will be running the police because they decide who they were going to allow coming in your neighborhood, and who they were gonna sit across there. So you didn't even have a chance to even voice your opinion on that before Gar came. Now, I'm gonna stand up here and talk, I'm sure there are other people who wanna talk, and I'm sure I'll talk. Yep. And here he is. He gave me the opportunity.
It was to the point where my husband and I were thinking that we weren't going to be able to stay in Eureka. It was like the Wild West. I'm a schoolteacher, just retired in the last year and a half, and so research has always been my strong point. I started to do crime comparisons across the west coast. In 2005, a meeting was called at City Hall. And present at that meeting, we had the district attorney, we had the city attorney, we had the entire city council, we had Chief Douglas, who was our chief at that time, and over 110,000, 110 people from the west side, and Chuck, you were there too, came to discuss the appalling level of crime that we were experiencing on the west side. This is the statistic. Eureka has 28,000 people. We've lost some population in the last decade, so now it's down to about 26. We had a higher crime rate than East Oakland with 300,000 people. You were more likely to be robbed, mugged, vandalized, your home was gonna be robbed more often in Eureka than if you lived anywhere else. It was appalling, and it was to the point where everybody was looking at, can we save? We all have guard dogs, we all have burglar alarm systems, we have mean dogs, I have really noisy dogs. We've done everything possible, and then Gar came along. And all of a sudden, it was about 18 months to two years after Gar Nielsen arrived, my neighbors and I looked around and we said, "Police on the street? They're patrolling? They come when we call?" And dispatch did not come. On more than one occasion, when a neighbor in my area called the police to report a shooting, the dispatcher said, "We don't go to that area anymore because it's like a war zone." That was our police department, they actually had that response. That didn't happen when Gar Nielsen came. All of a sudden, we had a dispatch that cared and didn't argue with people about whether it was a pipe bomb or not. We had a pipe bomb drone in front of the Head Start preschool at 5:30 in the evening, and it rocked the entire neighborhood like Beirut. And the police said, "We were mistaken, that it wasn't a pipe bomb, that it was a firecracker." We had the pipe blown out at both ends. And they didn't come. They didn't come. My neighbor and her entire family moved away. Her family insisted for her safety that she move away. She was a noted attorney and a nation, nationally recognized author, Kathy McCarthy, she's gone. We don't have her anymore. Her family insisted that she move up to Oregon. Then we got Gar. And I don't know how you measure the effectiveness of a police chief if by reducing the crime rate by double digits and doing it with less manpower and doing it with less money isn't a success. Gar testified before the budget committee. I don't know how to measure this. I go to, and you've probably all seen me, I go to the city council meetings, and I go to the budget meetings, and I go to the waste management meetings, and Gar testified, unknowing what was coming on Friday. His turn up to testify about his budget was Wednesday night last. And he stood up before the city council and said, with the reduced budget, "I have the budget figures at the house." He said, "Well, we're doing so well that what I'm gonna propose to you is a status quo budget." We have Measure O, guys, Measure O's already brought in $3.8 million. They're projecting next year, Measure O was only enacted April 1st of this year. We passed it last November, they're stunned by the amount that Measure O is bringing in. I have the chart, and it shows for fiscal year 1112, it goes straight up, and they're projecting $6 million for fiscal year 1112 for this city. So they're fixing the streets, they're putting the street sweepers back. Our police chief said, "I don't need any extra honey, I just will keep this status quo budget with a reduced force because it's running like a top, because we got it." Two days later, he was fired. Two days later, he was fired. I tell you what, I don't know how you measure success if Gar Nielsen was not a success in his job here as the chief of police. I don't know how you measure it. And I've been, I've been waiting for somebody to say something all weekend, but the city manager won't say anything, our mayor won't say anything, and what they're saying is that it's a personnel matter, so they can't comment. Go ahead, Linda.
I'm the acting Eureka City Council, and I'm really ashamed to be a part of the city in Eureka right now. This has just been outrageous. The Measure O money that you voted in to bring our police force and our fire departments up to par and increase our public safety, they have used at least, and this is like a very low estimate, $160,000 of that money to fire this police chief. Now, that's a low estimate, 'cause that doesn't include all of his leave and all that other time, okay? So that's that much money out of your Measure O, they just took it and threw it away. We have $1.7 million deficit in this city. The people of this city voted in Measure O so that we could have police protection, so that we can have fire protection. What's the city council doing with that? Firing our police chief. Yes, the street sweepers are great, I'm glad we put the street sweeper back on, we need to have clean streets, that helps our public safety and our image as a city. But it does not help to not put that money to work in the public safety. We're putting it everywhere else, we're raising people's salaries, we're filling out stuff, we're filling up departments that aren't about public safety. I'd love to see us have the revenue to have a really good city that's well-rounded and runs in a really good way, but we don't have that right now. But our city council is acting like we do. And they just like shun the entire populace of the city of Eureka, they voted in that Measure O money when they, when they allowed the city manager to do something like this. Now, this has to be...
We're not oversight committee, madam.
There's, there's supposed to be a Measure O oversight committee, and you know what happened? They voted to make it the finance advisory committee that's already in place, and that isn't a measure, it's allowable. But it doesn't allow the people to have a new committee to just watch out for their, their tax money. No. They're gonna spend it the way they wanna spend it, and they're raising, raising our reserves, which is great. I also would love to have a better reserve, you know, 'cause we need that, we have earthquakes, we might have tsunamis, we need to have a reserve so that we can do emergency services. But that's not what the Measure O money is for. And it's abusive, and we need to get organized in our city. I'm willing to, I can't offer my services to, you know, do anything against the city, but I can certainly offer nice, organized services. If people wanna take this petition to get rid of the city management throughout the city, I'm willing to meet them at 15th and California Street, noon next Saturday, with walk sheets, addresses of people who are likely to agree with you, so we don't waste our time going to these people who don't wanna talk to us. Because I waste my time every time I go to that city council meeting on Tuesday nights with the way that city council is pressing to our city.
I'm Peter LaValle, I'm the resident of Eureka. I was the mayor of this town for four years. I haven't really spoken since I was mayor, 'cause I figured somebody else won, that's their job. And I wanna, this, this issue really bothers me. During my watch as mayor, we had four shootings, the result of death from our police department. What upset me the most about that is after the fourth shooting, I went to our city manager and said, "Look, I wanna call a city council meeting because this community is exploding, and it needs to talk about this." I was told, "You don't even have the authority to do that." I went, "Wait a minute, I'm the mayor." The reason I bring this up is I really think Linda's onto something about our city manager having a little too much authority here. Ultimately, we didn't have a meeting, although I had to fight for that meeting behind the scenes. You guys didn't see that, I had to meet with the city attorney, I even got with the county council. They were so afraid that if we had a meeting to let our citizens talk about those shootings and the implications that they brought to our community, and the implications of the police and how they're run, they, they were afraid that that wasn't gonna work. I, I'm very proud as the mayor that I said, "Look, I'll control that meeting, it won't get too out of control." And I think we did that, and we had an escape valve where people could come and talk about the issues, which is happening here tonight. I agree with you, wholeheartedly. We have, I don't know Gar that well, he was hired six months after I left the office. But I do know, in the time he's been here, we haven't had four deaths as a result of shootings. We've heard positive community feedback almost across the board, so that's good feedback. What I do know is, through four years in the mayor's office, Dave Tyson might be a great financial wizard, but he is a terrible personnel manager. He is terrible. I've felt on that many times, and I hope now, I mean, I'm finally coming out, and this is the first time I've spoken in four and a half years since leaving office. I really hope that this community wakes up and says, "Let's get someone in there that's transparent and that's gonna listen to the citizens of this community and not just run their agenda, run the agenda."
When I moved to Eureka, it seemed like a diamond in the rough. And it got rougher. It wasn't until Gar came on board that we got a designated officer in Old Town to start addressing the issues that we have with many, many different elements within the city. Anything from shoplifting to drunkenness and drug use and, you know, the living. And he really put a dent in it. When Gar came on board, things dramatically changed down there. And now, we're back to no police officers, they're taking close to $2 million out of the city budget for the police department. So, we're back down to a skeleton force, and the guy who is doing yeoman's duty is gone. This is a real tragedy for this community. I mean, the people that have talked about the amount of, the percentages of crime that we have, that's not a lie. We are hemmed in by a crime rate that is holding this community back, and it has, it's still that diamond in the rough, it has tremendous potential.
I've served on the Parks and Health Commission, the Eureka Trail Committee, and the other over committees, and I've had my share of experiences working with David Tyson, including way back when we had Kelping. And I served in 2006 on the ADHOC Public Safety Committee that was put together with a number of residents from here in our community. And we came together with, came up with a proposal that included a lot of insight from a number of other committees where public safety had been an issue, and where police review may have been an appropriate thing. And we wrote a report, that report was totally rewritten by Dave Tyson before it was presented to the city council, and it struck many of the items that we had included. As a group that we'd all voted on and all agreed upon, we're taken out of that report. And the problem is, in my opinion, it's not, Dave Tyson needs to go, it's time for we get a new city manager with someone that looks out for him. It's over and over again, where the city council ends up taking direction from the city manager rather than vice versa. That's not the way it's supposed to be. We don't elect our city manager. He is hired, and we elect the city council, and that city council's there to represent us, and the city manager should be taking orders from the city council and not vice versa. It's time for it to end, it's time for it to move on, we need a new regime, as it's open to the, thank you very much.
I ran up against Dave Tyson all the time. The problem is this, Dave Tyson started as a finance director, and he then, after finance director for a number of years, when the city manager left, the council drafted him to be the interim city manager, and then he became the manager. Now, that was a long time ago, that was 2000, it's 2011. Most city managers' life expectancy as city manager is about three years. Three to five years is typical across the country, particularly in California. We've had a city manager here that's been here 11 years. There's no one on the council that's outlasted him. This is the same problem that's in Sacramento right now with term limits. You have people turning over in the state legislature all the time, but you have career bureaucrats are there all the time, and they never leave. And they get so much power that's not balanced on the political side of the spectrum. Well, that's what's happened here in the city of Eureka. You have someone who's been there so long, every single person that works at 531 K Street owes their job to that man. Every single one now. There was a few holdovers while I was there, but they're all gone now. Now, every person that's there owes their job to that city manager. And that city manager rules the city with an iron fist. You come in to the city as an employer and employee, and the first thing that Dave shows you on his wall is the loyalty of saying that's on the wall, about that's the most important thing is loyalty. And he holds it to that. Now, I was a witness, I was there on the selection committee that hired Gar, and I was there for the whole time, stopped the manager from firing him before, several times, while I was on the council. So this has been something that Dave Tyson's wanted to do for a while, unfortunately. He didn't have the community to support before, he doesn't really have it now, but he, he's got a council apparently that's backing, I guess, I don't know, since we don't know what the council did or didn't do. It's a, it's an unfortunate situation, but, you know, there was a time about, I think, August, July or August, when we'd just gone through the budget process, that few of us on the city council were pretty darn frustrated with the manager and his shell game with the money. Somebody called him a financial whiz, well, he is. You know, he's a whiz at doing this shell game with the city's money that we could never figure it out. Dave Augen, who I think I saw here in the audience, spent, what, 10, 12 years on the finance committee?
Eight.
Eight years on the finance committee, and he was, Tyson hated Dave Augen, because Dave Augen would analyze the numbers and crunch them and keep pointing out that they didn't add up, and then there was all these problems all the time, because it was all this sleight of hand, the fund, the fund, the loyal department heads that he liked, and defund, fire, and police. That's what's, what's going on. Yeah, I know the police chief said that he was gonna get by on this stripped-down budget, he was just trying to get along and do what his boss was telling him to do. The reality is, he's cut the police department back to where Reserve Officer Mike Quigley, who's, who's back working now, he retired, but he's back working as a reserve officer, who's supposed to be the Old Town Foot Patrol Officer, he never sees Old Town. He's just, they've got him responding to calls all the time because they don't have enough people. And as Linda pointed out, they're using the money for everything else. They used me to campaign for Measure O. And we went out there with the city manager and promised that that money would be used for public safety. If you remember the campaign placards, "Yes on O for public safety," that's what it said, big yellow plaque. Well, that's not what's happening, folks. And the responsible party in all this is Dave Tyson. And I agree with Mike Quigley that he's gotta go.
Okay, how do we get rid of this? How can you legally, how do we legally go about, or illegally? Short, you know, short employee in Guido to take him out somewhere, but what's the process? You've been in the city council, how do you go about removing him from office?
Well, I think if enough public pressure comes to bear on the electeds right now, that, that, that he would, I think he, I honestly believe if there's enough public outcry, he'll just quit. Remember, he quit back in the, in the fall or the summer last year, because the heat was getting so great with all the revelations about his shenanigans up here at the city hall. So I think enough public pressure, you, you could even see him resign. If not, then the pressure should build on the existing council to move, to remove him and hire another manager, which was supposed to be their task originally. I think Linda was even on the committee to hire a committee with now, I'll tell you, that you could get somebody cut from the same cloth, I agree, but you'd never get somebody that has the power that he has having been there so long. See, I think that that's what's missing for a lot of people, is they don't realize that having been the city manager for 11 years has given him so much more power than a new city manager, whatever that is. Because, like I said, every person that works there owes their job to him, and they're afraid they cross him. The whole thing with him being in power for so long is pretty hard to overcome, and the charter is in his favor, this is the city manager form of government, you know, and that's the way the town is constructed. Now, I've seen a lot of city managers come and go from this town. I worked closely with a city manager while that named Dave Thule, I was back in the 80s. And, you know, he was here for about three years, he had, he had his impact while he was here, but nowhere near to the kind of power that Dave Tyson. Now, I, some of you have been here long enough to remember when, when Story was, was, was the city manager. Remember the guy who shot the bears at the zoo? That's the kind of uproar that needs to happen right now. That guy ordered the two bears done away with, because the city didn't have the money to pay for their feed anymore and their upkeep, so they just shot him. Well, that's what, that's kind of what's happening here, because the chief wasn't compliant enough with the city manager, and the city manager had personal animosity towards him, and he's just gotten rid of him here. And many times, somebody mentioned about the city manager making decisions for the council, I saw it over and over and over again, and that's why he and I are always locking horns, because I felt that I was supposed to represent just people, and not him, and not do what he said. Yes, and then?
Larry, so if everybody in this room tells all of their friends to write letters and send emails and make phone calls, that will have an impact, will you get hundreds of people?
It won't have an impact unless you go to city council.
And, okay, and...
Sign the petition, but you have to, you're gonna have to make your present known, city council's certainly one way, huge rally in front of city hall, you know, there's ways to do it, but it, it takes participation, you can't do it from home in your easy chair.
The city hall has forgotten that they serve us. They think we serve them. And it's time, you know, every politician, almost every politician has term limits. There's a reason for that. But the city manager does not. And somehow, along the line, in his last 11 years, he has slowly gained all of his power, and no one in this city, no one should have that kind of power. It took, I want, everybody remember, it took a single person to decide to fire our chief of police, one person. And nobody asked us. That is too much power. That is too much power.
Yeah, and to dovetail with what Sylvia said, we had a great city attorney here named Cheryl Shaffman. Now Cheryl, technically, under the city charter, worked for the city council. But the reality is, if you control votes on the city council, then you still have the power. And after a while Cheryl could count to three and saw the writing on the wall and so she left, like so many other staff people left the city. And, you know, that, it is, it's just too much power. You had a question?
So I have something to say.
Go ahead.
I'm standing looking at all you people and I know darn well that three-fourths of you were out there during the Vietnam War doing something, okay? If you weren't, shoot. And it takes three of this amount of people to get together and be there together to make a statement. And we have to say, oh, when you should, or you shouldn't. We have to do it. We have to show up. We have to make noise and we have to keep at it till we get rid of this.
Just since I could never do it when I was on the city council, I wanna do it. Now, I wanna call out Matthew Omen, who's standing right over there, who's one of Dave Tyson's best buddies, so say Matthew.
Matthew, make me good notes. Harry, bring him really well back to Tyson, won't you? Tell him everything he said. Do that for us, won't you? Don't forget to take those notes.
I just wanna say this, it seems like I may have to ask this dumb Dave. It's like Vanville, that bad guy off Fox News, you still got Fox News. This was a renegade act. It would not happen if it wasn't the city council that went along with it.
The city council represents my interests and that's Linda Adams.
Yeah, we want it.
Play next time. You know, we need to get behind our candidates and we need to do something differently because we should not have laws, we should not have this shitty city council.
I think this came from, I was stood on a couple of the city council, I mean, not city council committees, I think just to get rid of me because I'm throwing people aside. So they definitely put me on a committee side to quieten. I remember the hot potato was kind of like Dave Tyson would say, "Well, I only answer to the city council." No, it's not, you know, I don't make the decisions. And then I'd go to the city council, say, "Well, we don't, we answer..." you know, everybody's like this hot potato, so it's just back and forth. And so they say, "We answer to Tyson." And he says, "No, I answer to the city council." So that's what this, I think this is my...
The city council does not answer to Dave Tyson in the charter, right? Quite the law. Okay. The city council can hire the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. The city manager hires everybody else. So the city council can't be evaluating other department heads other than the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney.
Okay, where's the...
The city council has to, a question, the city council has to approve hiring and determinations of any department heads that the city manager does. And there you get the circular thinking and it needs to be called.
Yes.
As I understand it, this used to be a mayoral form of government with no city manager and that the powers that be realized that having a city manager would allow them to have their way, whereas if the citizenry could directly vote for the mayor, then at least there was a chance of having, you know, better kind of results than what we're having now. I was wondering, since you've been on the council, how difficult would it be to go back to a mayoral, being voted for directly by the citizenry versus a, an appointment position?
Well, that's an interesting question. I went to several California League of Cities meetings and what I saw is the trend is the exact opposite. To go away from the mayor form of government because it just isn't, it isn't a good business model for a city to run that way.
One of the things that we have problems with in this city is we don't have a true ward system. Okay? I'm sorry, one of these problems we have is we do not have a true ward system. To give you an example, Larry Black's is sitting here, standing here, and he's not a council person. He won his ward, but they got all the rest of the votes across town, folks. Across town, they couldn't care less about what we have to deal with. If we had a true ward system, at least our areas would be represented by somebody who actually knows what's going on. We don't have that right now. Now, I'm not in city council, so I can say anything I want to. Do anybody, does anybody here believe that Marion Brayden knows anything about the West Side? I just might say one breaks here, just one, because she doesn't. Now, that doesn't mean that that woman isn't, you know...
Before Gar Nielsen got here, we had to have lists of license plate numbers with suspected drug dealers or the police wouldn't come. And they never, anyway...
Very far, they've been there for months and these people didn't even own these cars. We were trying to clean up the neighborhood. So this is what we have for a city council person now. And I'm sort of thinking that some of them know through A, A through K, and the rest of them know through L through Z because combined, they don't have on IQ higher than their body temperature.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you were gonna go near the neighborhood, okay? I'm there, Steve, I'm sorry, I felt bad.
My name's Lorraine Cornell and I lived here about 20 years and I've heard a lot about power, the power of the city manager, the power of the city council. Well, we're the ones that have the power, right? And we have to remember that this city council was not voted in by the majority of the people. One person was appointed, two people were appointed, one person was appointed, one person won by a minority. And so we're the ones who have the power. We're the ones to, right, one, yeah, that's right. We were the ones who had the power. And I think that we should maybe start thinking right now about some actions to take. And I think it's good to talk, but I also think we should talk about some actions to take.
Hi, I'm Ronson Al. And I've twilled in the city in a variety of roles, eight years for planning commissioner, a couple times of council wannabe. I think some of you may have seen the timestamp, you may have seen a little sidebar where I said I was shocked and stunned, stunned is the term I use. But as a matter of fact, I was profoundly disappointed in what happened, like all of you. And the first reaction I had, I knew what can we really do about it? Because I think that's really ultimately, we all here agree that this was really wrong, we had great police chief, and that somehow, some way, we need to do something. Well, you know, one of the things that was suggested, and I think it's a great idea, is we get that petition together and that we continue along that line. Petition, put pressure on the city manager, basically to leave, I mean, I think that's what we're talking about. And I think that's positive, but it's not sure enough. So, I mean, I'm gonna suggest here tonight that if we're really going to have any systemic change in terms of who gets reappointed, how the city gets run, who the city manager's going to be, you may really have to change the council. I know it's not going to be easy. It's never easy. When the election's just off, not easy, we didn't do well last time, but frankly, that may be your only course of action. And I remain to be seen as we go forward, whether to mention whether or not we have some more opportunities to see the city council in a public way, have to stand up and be counted on what happened. But last Tuesday night, I went before city council, as a number of other people did, to testify basically, public comment that I wanted to see the police chief contract extended. And I was so alarmed to see that, you know? And as I walked in there and I stood up, and it's always, and nobody, I do not like getting up and doing that three minutes. It's really kind of gut-wrenchingly tough, no matter how much you do it, if you've got three minutes, you've gotta try to get your point across. And I started talking about how great our police people, not our police chief first, but our police officers, because those are the people on the ground that were doing the job. And frankly, you know, the chief's great, but the police officers had frankly gotten really good and they, somebody had to make that happen, right? Somebody had to give them leadership, training, confidence to go out and do the job. And I think that's already something that did that. And I think that'll work. Hopefully, I think, we'll still continue to get good policing for we have good officers today and there'll be some carryover until we get a new police chief that really hopefully has the same skill as the guard. But we're kind of in this intermediate spot. And when I stood up in front and I started talking, I didn't really realize that just a few minutes before, they're gonna close session. And I was kind of out of it. I looked at the agenda, oh, police chief contract. Uh-oh. They were just talking about that.
Employee evaluation.
Was it?
Employee evaluation.
Employee evaluation, thank you, Linda. Employee evaluation, and I'm like, yeah, they were just talking about that. And I stood up there and looked at this and I'll tell you, I mean, you talk about stone faces looking back at me, I mean, I'm like, oh my God, you know, something's wrong here. I mean, they weren't listening. And I, afterwards, afterwards, I went, oh, I thought, something happened here. I mean, something is really wrong. These people were not interested in a word I had to say. So why? Well, now we know, don't we? Now, my point is, this is gonna go forward and very honestly, maybe some council people have an opportunity to change their mind. But if they don't, if they continue on the path that you have seen, Ray Davis can tell you what could happen. You have the power as people here to petition, to put them back on the balance, and to find other people to serve on your behalf, to see that you get a council people that will listen to the people, act for their people, in your interest. And that's what you're gonna have to do, in my personal opinion.
It's important to go to state council, but it's not enough. I've gone to city council a bunch of times and they just ignore you. They, they kind of wait, uh-huh, uh-huh, that's nice, and then they do what they wanna do. I say, is there a lawyer in the house? I think that these people have such a sense of entitlement that they're sloppy and we can catch them at some point.
I would like to know, show of hands, Linda offered, volunteered Saturday to meet us with petitions. I'd like to show of hands, how many people this Saturday can meet and we can go and on the route to get signatures for this?
For what?
For, to make up, to get rid of Tyson.
To get rid of Tyson. There's only two things we can do. We can force the council to fire Dave Tyson, and they're the ones who have to fire Dave Tyson. Or we have to recall, two members of the city council, they are unresponsive and they absolutely, Ron can now hit it on the head. They look at us with implacable faces, they don't care at all. It probably wouldn't matter if the council chambers were full of all of us. They do what they want. They are not responsive to the public. It'll take two.
It's the fact that you can't get a building permit in this city without standing on your head, tunneling underneath, and doing all sorts of calisthenics. And you can't start a business without going through all sorts of hoops unless you're the right person. And then everything is easier. And that's wrong. And our city, our city council, our city council should be concerned about that and they are not. And this is continuous. I think that the first step, because it's fairly simple, it doesn't require that we get a certain amount of signatures and a certain amount of time, if we can really, if we can go out next Saturday from noon to 3 o'clock, yeah, I'll map it all out for y'all, get as many signatures to get rid of Dave Tyson in this community as we can get, it will be a start and a mobility exercise and the organization that we need to go on to the next step because that's much more difficult, okay? You can, you have to have 20% of the voters to get rid of, to cover a recalc or a city council person. That's a pretty big part. So we're gonna be, we need to be organized to go out and get those signatures. We can't just go, oh, here's a signature, you know, petition, let's go out and ask our friends. We need organization and I'll help.
So would that be then presented to the city council next Tuesday?
Yes, would you know, yes.
Is that needs to be an agenda item or is that in the public comment section? At what point does that come into...
Well, I suppose it's the agenda, I don't know. I think I'm gonna public comment, though.
I finally had to call on the city charter to back me up and enforce the provisions of the city charter for which I had support on the city council to enable the finance advisory committee to participate in the review of the city budget. Under Mr. Tyson's regime, going all the way back to the finance director of this city, that was not allowed. The finance committee was not supposed to even see the budget until after it was passed. Now, some things are a little bit upside down there. Another thing that I fought for, and at least one year we got it right, the city charter requires that the city manager present a draft proposed city budget to the city council 45 days prior to the end of the fiscal year. And that translates to May 15th or May 16th since May has 31 days. That was practically never done prior to my sticking the paper stick to get that proposed budget delivered on time so that there would be an adequate amount of time for it to be reviewed. Well, we finally won that battle also at least once, maybe twice, I think there was a second year when the draft budget came in just a few days later. Anyway, what I wanted to really address to you folks this evening, and if you kind of nibble around the edges of this particular theme, what we are up against is a good old boy network in this town that rules this town with an iron fist and David Tyson is their primary action figure. He's their GI Joe, he's the one that does their bidding. These people, this little group of wealthy, well-placed individuals, and one of their spies is in here tonight listening to every word we're saying. These people have controlled this town with their money, their influence, their partisan politics, what have you, for decades and they are not willing to give it up. So we're going to have a very tough uphill battle to take on this power network represented by, I don't have to name names, you know who they are. They're in the news every so often. And usual, yes, the famous, the usual suspects in just about every skullduggery, chicanery that goes on in this town. And I'm willing to bet my last dollar on the fact that I'll bet they're behind this particular move on Tyson's part, this move. And for some reason, they didn't want Gar Nielsen.
Because he wasn't controllable.
Well, that's different than that.
And I remember one distinct person standing up and he said, you know, we really don't need any more police. You know, probably a lot of people have to call the police, so I don't really care what happened to the police. And that was almost a quote. I would like to remind everybody that that person was Rex Bone. You must remember Supervisor Next.
Dave Tyson's best buddy, too.
What happens is we, either the public doesn't see this or the public forgets. And when they start running for office, you know, you would swear that they're gonna get us everything, you know, with two chickens in our pot and, you know, everything else. But the public needs to remember these things. These people don't change their minds and I don't know why they don't want us to have a decent police department, I really truly don't. But I'm gonna tell you something, City Hall has plotted tooth and nail ever since we have started coming forward and saying and demanding that we live in an area that's safe. Now, I don't know what else we can tell them, but when the police won't even show up for you because it's too dangerous, how do you expect anybody to live in these neighborhoods?
There is a good old boys' network in here, in this community. There is no question about it. And what made me wanna get up again is Linda talking. I don't know how many times is the mayor not having a vote, sitting there listening to the spot zoning that occurred in Eureka. And I'm not gonna mention the name, you can look at the record and find it yourselves, but we, in the four years I was mayor, we spot zoned at least five agent properties, changing the zoning to fit what David Tyson and his buddies wanted to do with their properties. And it was totally contrary to this county general plan... And it was totally contrary to this county general plan. And I don't know how you feel, and what side of the fence you're on about regulations, and how you do business, but we kind of thwarted that. We just threw those out, and did what these guys wanted to have happen. And I don't know about you, but that's not the way to do community planning. That's why we're ending up with a city, and I'm embarrassed to say it, one of my good friends from Sacramento, David Lloyd, came up here and said, "Peter, you got the ugliest entrance to your town." That's because we never planned it. You know, he spot zoned it, and it looks like shit. We gotta get rid of that kind of mentality. And I really think, you guys beyond the communities around us, some years, let's get some new leadership that wants to play by the rules. I mean, I run, you know, my career that I just retired from was running a youth program, helping runaway homeless kids in the community. And I had to deal with regulations with the city, and I fought them tooth and nail, but I lived by them, because they do have a purpose. Regulations do, to some degree, make sense, and they have give and take. But not when you're just, if you can gather around them, because who you are allows you to gather around them. And that, I can tell you, in my four years of experience, is how this city is run. And that's not right, and that's gotta change.
And not only did they have to fire, but also, we're willing to have the city of Eureka eat $166,000 in the process, as you know, for the severance pay and all the rest of it. And they've not given us an explanation as to why, and I think we need to demand that they give it to us. I mean, when we're talking about that kind of money involved, they owe that to us, and they haven't done that. Also, as far as getting Gar Nielsen to come back, I know he said he probably wouldn't want it, but you know, it seems to me there's one possible way that he might, and that would be that if we promptly got rid of David Tyson, right after all this happened, if we were able to, if he was able to say, hey, the guy that got rid of you, bam, we got rid of him immediately, so how do we do that? Well, okay, he needs to be voted out by the council, needs to be three council members that can vote against him. Okay, so right now, we've got one, we'll do it. So there need to be two more. So it sounds like what the focus needs to be, is that we need to contact those council people. You have to call, attack the ones that represent you and your ward, I don't know, you just contact him? Okay, and what we need to tell them is, either you vote Tyson out of there, or I will vote against you in the next election, you will permanently lose my support, I will support your opposition, I'm gonna vote for your opposition, I will contribute to their campaigns. We need to tell them that repeatedly, it seemed like that's what the focus needs to be. Vote him out, or I will vote you out. Does that seem reasonable?
What I'd like to say is, I think that it's really important to call your city council person, because every time we go and talk, it's a group, they just, you know, they don't care. And put them on the spot, you know, why are you letting this happen? It's obvious, and targeted, great job, everything you're supposed to do. And then, you know, let them deal with it, and they're conscious. Because that's immediate, we can do that before the next meeting, and I'm in favor of putting all of these things, too. But I think that's something we have to do, because we really have to build some bridges. We might touch a nerve with one or more of them, and says, hey, you know, that's right. Instead of just assuming that they're all bad guys, and that we're at a war. The other thing is, I lived in East Oakland for 22 years, and those of us who lived in Oakland felt like Oakland is the best-kept secret in the Bay Area. Because there are many wonderful little neighborhoods nestled between really, really crap neighborhoods and horrible places, and things can move around, because people work in their own neighborhoods a lot. So when I'm here and I see what that city council does, I don't really expect them to do anything great. I think it's our job, and our neighborhood shows it. You know, we got some help this last four years, but other than that, a lot of what's happened to improve our neighborhood has been done by the people who live there. And so we need to, someone else said, we are the people, and we have the power. That's what we have to remember, we don't need to cry and say, we're scared, we don't have a police chief. We have to think about who we are, how we make our neighborhood stronger and better. And it's come a long way already. The last thing I would say is about the strong mayor. When I was in Oakland, Kerry Brown was elected mayor. We don't wanna change the charter or anything, but still, we have a good mayor. And then, the mayor that comes in, he's elected, he's elected around it, the first thing he did was circulate an initiative to put a measure on the ballot to make him a strong mayor. And he did. But before him, or before he came on to the city council and became mayor, the mayor in Oakland was not allowed to vote, except in a tie, like here. He became a strong mayor and made a big difference. So keep that in mind, we get our mayor in the next election.
We were told by the police department at that time, the group of neighbors who ended up getting their lives threatened by the hooligans that were living in 804B. We were told to take care of it ourselves, because the police were not gonna help us. They told us there's a nuisance abatement lawsuit process, do it yourselves. Against people that it turned out were selling stolen property, selling a minimum of three different forms of drugs, including heroin and speed. And there were constant busts. When they did finally bust that building, because of the human pride from the area around it, there were so many people that finally kept going to city council, and complaining, and complaining, and complaining. That finally, they did a big bust, they took nine felons out of there, okay? I was told up till then, take down numbers, take down times, do the whole thing. These guys were so blatant, you could stand out on the front porch, and be looking right at them, and watch them just hand the drugs to each other, and they didn't care. They were so unafraid of us, and we were the people that lived there, okay? Gar came in, 804 is now cleaned up, and it stayed that way. We're starting to have a little bit of trouble there, but if I called, I'd get a police response. They're not afraid to come and take care of business. They come through our neighborhood all the time. The police that come to our houses are polite, they are professional, they are effective. They give us their business parts, they call back and go, how did that go? Did it stay quiet? Before that, we never had any of that, we didn't. They called that whole area, "Federally Flats," for God's sake. Okay, this was our own police department. Now we have a police department where the gentlemen on the street feel that each other has somebody's back. We had a problem before where the district attorney did not have a good relationship with the city police department either. We had a revolving door going on down there at the jail, so even if they brought them in, they threw them right back out. Guess what, under Gar, we have a good relationship with the district attorney's office again, and a lot of that has stopped. We want to send a clear message to this city council, that even if Gar won't come back, and they won't extend the olive branch, that we want someone of his caliber, his ability to manage people, his ability to empower his police force, and the neighborhoods and citizens that he serves. We want someone that's gonna stand up, that's gonna be there 24/7. That man was never off. He came from his home, I can't even tell you how many different calls that I've heard him, where he should have been home drinking a beer, and he went running into something to go take care of business so that someone didn't get injured, because he was dedicated. It wasn't, oh, I'm on my own barbecue, too bad. It was, oh, I gotta go, and off he went. We need somebody that's gonna be that dedicated, and we need the city council to hear resoundingly that we want that in our staff, not just our city police department, but in our staff, the dedication to service the citizens of this city. That's what we want. Not serving a few, not serving cutting, us within the city, that's who they're responsible to. And we need to make sure, by continuing to show up again, and again, and again. That was part of what happened with a lot of the things that we've been able to get done over the last decade, is that you see the same faces showing up again, and again, and again. Persistence pays, folks, if you only show up one time, then if numbers do have an impact. But if they keep showing up, that's when they go, oh God, they're not going away. That's what you want, you want them to start getting a little bit scared about that, because those aren't the people that can get people voting one way or the other. Those aren't the people that can move and shape things that happen out in our community. Remember that you have the power, it's all about you. They are a service-oriented profession, you don't let them ever forget it. They're up there to serve us, and we serve them always.
I was asked recently how I became a neighborhood activist, I'm really not sure. But I remember when I moved into Eureka 10 years ago, and there was a car, a broken-down car on this front lawn. And I heard from the neighborhood that they had been trying to get rid of that car for nine years. And one day, I called the police department, and they told me that they couldn't do anything because it was a private property. I spent two days on every single solitary ordinance in the city, until I finally found the ordinance that covered this car, by all the police departments. And I won't give you anybody's name, because that's not really fair. But I was told that the person that had the car on the front lawn was very promising. Now, being the wife of a retired police officer, and a mother of a local marshal, and I had police officers in my family forever, back to my grandfather, which worked on the San Francisco Police Department. I reminded him that not only did he have a gun, he had a taser, he had a stick, and if all else fails, he had a rifle and a rifle. Just how aggressive can the person be? They actually took this ordinance to the city attorney to make sure that they could do this. And six months later, we finally got rid of that car. About two months later, I had a prostitute who moved out and out of there, and she was very risky. And I go to the police department, and they told me there was nothing they could do. So I got on my little car table, and I got my little coffee, and I got my camera up there, and I got a little pad, and I sat up there, and print on the car, drove on, I took a picture of him. I took a picture of his license plate, until she came up, and she called the police on me. And the police showed up, and they told me I couldn't do that. And I told them to arrest me, please arrest me. They didn't arrest me, and she moved out, she was like... But that all happened before Gar. I don't have any plastic tip hidey-goey that I know of, or they're not very good. And I don't have any of them cars, and I don't have any of those kind of things. Now, Gar didn't personally do that, what he did was he allowed his leadership to do that. And whether it's our country, or the corporation, or this city, it's no better than the leadership that wants it. And if we have to go back to what we had, we're gonna lose a lot more people, folks. Personally, I believe that financial crisis are serious, and the job that we, um, need, and there should be. There was a lot, we wanted to buy it, but this was done. And there's a difference in bank style, make goodness there was a difference. Because if the last team was in connection with David Tyson, and this was the best style that it read upon, it was the one that he was doing. And like, he did, it was a lot of things that were happening. And he brought him into 21st century, and he's done it, made a big difference on the website. None of the things that the neighborhood had done on the website could have been accomplished without the foundation of the system, and we couldn't have accomplished it.